Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for Monday, November 9th, 2020. If we'd all first, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, bill of life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And at this point in time, I'd like to introduce the members of the commission that are here this evening. We have JP Benoit, who is our chairperson, James Fitzsimmons, commission member, Jeff Cohen, also a member of the commission, Jamie Hine, who is an alternate on the commission, and I'm Jim Saitter, I'm the chairperson of the commission. Also on the line is Cheryl Ann Tubby, our recording secretary, and with me this evening in the offices here at Town Hall is Thomas Talbot, our interim town planner. And before I get started with our agenda, I just wanted to go over our way this meeting will proceed. And I'd like to start by explaining how this planning and zoning meeting is, will be conducted tonight in light of the constraints that we have while working with this go-to meeting. You know, as many of you are in your homes, if your microphones are not muted, please mute it. If that's not possible, please be conscious of noise around you. Microphones on different devices have different levels of sensitivity. The go-to meeting system does not deal well with multiple simultaneous speakers. The audio only, the audio from only one person will come through at a time. Therefore, please only speak when I acknowledge or recognize you. If there's an exchange going on between a presenter and a questioner, each of you must finish speaking before the responding person can start. As the meeting organizer, I have a mute all button. If individuals are not participating respectfully, I'll be forced to mute. Also, the person who has the floor can be heard. If I mute all while you were speaking, please be patient. I will allow you to resume speaking as soon as reasonably possible. Most individuals viewing this meeting, I assume, are familiar with how the Planning and Zoning Commission conducts its meetings. For those who are not familiar, here's a general overview of how we're going to conduct this meeting. The applicant and/or its representative makes a presentation of the application, after which Mr. Talbot and/or members of the commission will then have the opportunity to ask questions. I will ask each commission member individually, beginning with Mr. Fitzsimmons, if they would like to ask any questions concerning the application. While the commission is only required to allow members of the public to comment on applications that require a public hearing, it has been the practice of the commission to provide the public with the opportunity to comment on all applications. Once the public had the opportunity to comment, the applicant will have an opportunity to make any final comments, and commission members will have the opportunity to ask any final questions or discuss the application. Once completed, the commission will take action on the application. For members of the public who want to be heard during the meeting, please keep this in mind. There's a chat bar you can open by clicking on the icon that looks like a speech bubble near the top right portion of the screen. When I ask for public comment, please type into the chat bar that you would like to speak. Each will be called upon in the order of their respective requests to receive. Members of the public who have logged on, just watch. If you do not intend to participate in the meeting, please turn off your cameras. If you dial into the meeting on the toll-free number and are listening through a traditional telephone, I have no clue and no way to identify you. I will not see your name or your phone number. I simply see you as caller 1234, depending upon how many callers we have. You know, I'll attempt to call on individuals in the order in which they called in, but again, I have no clue as far as who called in. Those who log into the meeting through a smartphone or a computer, please select the screen name. Anyone speaking for the application or as a member of the public must identify themselves by providing their name and address for the record. For those of you viewing the meeting, the agenda materials are posted on the town website. There's a tab on the right side, second below the heading, "This Week's Meetings." Again, that's how we will plan on conducting this meeting. So it brings us now to our, that first item really is our consideration of the minutes of our October 14th, 2020 meeting. I'd ask any commission members if they have any additions, deletions, corrections to the minutes, and if none, I'd then ask for a motion to approve the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the minutes of the October 14th meeting as submitted.
We have a motion to approve the minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cohen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Seeing that, the minutes are approved. And I'd like to start off by indicating some of the items that are not going to be taken up this evening. There are several items. The first is item number one. It's a special permit, fill-in excavation for Pfizer at 21 Tully's Road. The applicant has requested that we take no action on that application. The next item is public hearing number three. It's a zoning text amendment, section 6.11. C, planning and zoning. And dropping down to the next one, which is item number four, zoning text amendment, section 4.9 I X, section 4.4.10 I 5, and 4.13 W P D, planning and zoning, section 21, or 2.1, 5.1 C, 6.1 C, and 6.12 B. That also is no action. The reason for that is, based on our regulations, these, both of these applications are subject to referral to one or more of the three councils of government that Wallingford either abuts or is part of, per section 10.5 of the Wallingford zoning regulations, and 830 P of the Connecticut general statutes. That requires a, at least 30 days' notice from the date of referral to the, per comment, or for commencement, rather, a public hearing. As last month, we decided to put these items on our agenda because of the lateness of the meeting in the month of October. It only is 25 days from our last meeting, so those applications will have to wait till our December meeting. And the next item for business that will not be heard this evening at the request of the applicant is new business item number five. It's a site plan, multi-family conversion for Jay Ostrowski, and I apologize if I'm pronouncing the name wrong, at 19 North Street. That's where we are as far as applications that will not be heard, which brings us to now our next item that will be heard, or actually the first item that will be heard this evening, is a continuation of a public hearing from last month. It's a zoning text amendment for Atlas One, Moulton, at 10 Center Street. And which of the gentlemen on the commission would like to note all correspondence for the record? Anybody, everybody?
Yeah, I can do it, Mr. Chairman.
Very much.
Um. First item I have is a letter from Janice Small dated November 4th, 2020, to Planning and Zoning. And that is it.
Okay. And at the, at the last meeting, there were five commission members that were at the meeting. Mr. Fitzsimmons, Mr. Cohen, Mr. Hine, and Mr. Allison, and then myself. Obviously, Mr. Allison is not here this evening. He was sitting in for Mr. Matarazzo, and Mr. Hine was sitting in for Mr. Benoit. But I guess I'd ask JP, JP, if you reviewed the, because we would like to have five commission members on the application. Were you able to review the, the October meeting, and do you feel comfortable sitting on the application?
Mr. Chairman, yes, I do.
Okay, so with that, we will have the five commission members that are in attendance this evening to act on the application if we so choose. With that, I will turn it over to the applicant for a continuation of the application.
Good evening. This is Attorney Mark Brigamo from Marcus Law Firm, 275 Branford Road, North Branford, Connecticut, attending the meeting with me and the other screen. Also shown is Mark Brigamo, is Dr. Tracy Moulton, the principal of the applicant in this case. The commissioners, we had referred, we had presented our information to the, to the commissioners of the public hearing at the last meeting. The commissioners came back with a recommendation that this be referred to the Corporation Council to review and to revise language to make it more acceptable. The Corporation Council had, we had both spoken. I had given her some proposed language. She looked at it. She gave me some proposed language. And as you can see in the memorandum that you've received dated November 4th, 2020, the, the language in accordance, what we believe was in accordance with what your wishes were. As of October 14th, we came up for the definition of a wellness center, which was an establishment that offers services for the body and mind, includes at least two of the following: skincare services, fitness services, personal training, nutritional services, retail sales of wellness products, and state licensed certified chiropractic or acupuncture services. Chiropractic services as part of Wellness Center, maybe on the ground floor street facing inside of the building, providing at least one additional wellness service is also available on that ground floor. And as far as, as far as we're concerned, we will, we, we can agree to that language was worked out between Corporation Council. We, what we had used just for the board's certification in this case, there was one town that actually had a wellness center definition, and that was the town of New Haven. And that was, that was very broad. And Attorney Small basically referred to the minutes of the last meeting with regards to the commissioners' statements as far as what they were, what they seemed to be looking for, and compared the language that I had given her and came up with this language. And at this point in time, I would ask that this language be the accepted revised language for the application.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any commission members that would like to ask any questions of the applicant and/or make any comments of, on the, on the application and/or the proposed language? And as always, Mr. Fitzsimmons, I'll start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much. I, I would just, I'd just like to note for the record, a month makes a big difference for this particular application. I think this town center district regulation does incorporate the changes and the feedback that we presented at the meeting last month. I have, I could support this request. I do think that this is, addresses the concerns that were raised in October. I know it's been a long road for this particular applicant, but I think the idea of the first-floor street-facing issue has been addressed for just a wellness center, and it certainly, I'd be able to support this amendment as submitted. So thank you for your revisions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons. Mr. Cohen, any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I would also support this. I, I supported it, you know, the language actually at last, the last meeting as well. And the, the, yeah, I'm, I think this would be a great addition, you know, to the town center, and I, I stated that last time, too. I think it's a, brings vibrancy, I think, was the term we used last time downtown. But my, my comment is really for us on planning and zoning. You know, I, I think that, you know, the future, you know, we restricted medical and dental offices. You know, I, I do think that's in our future, and I, I think, you know, tonight's not the night to decide this, but I think we should give that an additional look at some point for our downtown. You know, there are a couple of medical things, facilities downtown, and, you know, they, they do bring people down there. And, you know, quite honestly, I think downtown is struggling to, you know, attract things. So I think, you know, it might be worth considering at some point in the future. But for this, I definitely support this.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cohen. Mr. Hine.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have much more to say than what's already been said. So I support the project. I support the amendment, and I don't have much, much more to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hine. And last but not least, Mr. Benoit.
Mr. Chairman, I actually also am in favor of this project, and I would concur with Mr. Cohen, too, that at some point, we probably need to look at the regulations at a more broader view.
Thank you. And from my standpoint, again, I support the regulation, this change. I think, as I mentioned at the last meeting, you know, I felt that certainly a wellness center, a well-defined wellness center, was something that would be appropriate on the, you know, on the, on the first level of properties, of buildings within our town center district. So I certainly support it, and I appreciate the applicant working with our town planner to come to something that appears to be acceptable to the commission. But this is a public hearing, continuation of the public hearing. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak? When I look at the chat bar, I don't see that anyone has indicated they would like to speak. I know that we have some callers on the line. We have three callers. Are there any individuals on the phone that would like to speak on the application or make any comments? And I hear nothing. So at this point in time, unless the applicant would like to make any final comments on the application, or if commission members have any final questions, since I suspect they don't, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing. And again, sir, do you have any final comments that you'd like to make on the application?
No.
Okay. So at this point in time, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Please.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we close the public hearing for zoning text amendment, Atlas One, Moulton, 100 Center Street, application 504-20.
We have a motion to close the public hearing. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by, I believe, Mr. Fitzsimmons? Thank you, James. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And at this point in time, the public hearing is, is closed. At this point in time, there's no discussion on the application by the commission members. I'd ask for a motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve application 504-20, Moulton 100 Center Street. A zoning text amendment for Moulton to amend to section 4.26. B. 7 of the Wallingford zoning regulations to add wellness centers as a permitted use in the town center district as submitted September 11th, 2020, revised November 4th, 2020. Effective date, November 13th, 2020, because a well-defined wellness center creates a vibrant pedestrian-friendly commercial destination that is a permitted use.
We have a motion on the application. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, voting beginning with Mr. Fitzsimmons.
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Benoit?
Yes.
Mr. Hine?
Yes.
And I vote yes, the application's been approved. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much. Good night, Al.
You're welcome. That brings us to our next item on the agenda. It's a new business item, item number six. It's a site plan. It's a 785-square-foot accessory apartment for Ranseado at 112 Highland Avenue. And again, while the applicant's preparing for his or her presentation, Mr. Benoit, would you please note all correspondence for the record?
Do you want me to do it, Tim, or JP?
Yes, Mr. Cohen, if you feel comfortable doing it, I'd certainly appreciate it. It would take the weight off of JP's shoulders.
You have safety first, so.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen.
Okay. I have a letter from Tom Talbot, planner, to Stacy McPherson Ranseado dated October 23rd, 2020. I have a letter from the Fire Marshal dated October 7th, 2020. I have an inter-office memorandum from Eric Kruger, senior engineer, to Tom Talbot, acting town planner, dated November 3rd, 2020. I have a interdepartment referral from town engineer dated October 7th, 2020.
I think both of those, that's October 27th from the engineering, and then I think also it's the 27th from the Fire Marshal. If you see on the bottom, bottom left, I think is when they signed it.
Okay. Yes. 10/27, right? Um, I have another letter from Tom Talbot to Stacy McPherson Ranseado dated October 30th, 2020. And I have a set of plans received by Wallingford Planning and Zoning on October 30th. It's quite a large. And I think that is it. Yeah, that's it.
Thank you very much. And at this point in time, if the applicant would please introduce herself and begin her presentation.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Stacy McPherson Ranseado, and I live at 212 Highland Avenue, and requesting the permit for a accessory apartment.
Okay. And I guess I, first, I just ask, Mr. Talbot, Mr. Talbot, I think you've indicated that you see that the plans need are reformed?
Yeah, as for the correspondence, you can see that the initials can see that the, the initial submission, on the initial submission, the proposed accessory apartment exceeded the maximum 780 square feet by, I don't know, 20, 30 square feet. Subsequently, they revised the plan. That's the plan, that the revised plans are what you have in your packet, and those plans are, in fact, in compliance with all elements of section, 6.1, this is section 6.15. They're in compliance with all portions of the zoning regulations that have to do with accessory apartments.
Thank you, Mr. Talbot. That being said, commission members, with any questions for the applicant concerning the accessory apartment? And again, as usual, I'll start off with Mr. Fitzsimmons.
No issues, no questions.
But, Mr. Benoit?
No, nothing.
Nothing. Mr. Hine?
I don't have any questions either. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure, and finally, Mr. Cohen?
I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. Good, and I have no questions for the applicant, as I think Mr. Talbot, because I know Mr. Talbot indicated the application conforms to our regulations. I would suspect the applicant has no final comments that she'd like to make. Again, you're not obliged to make any comments. Okay, so at this particular point in time, I'd entertain a motion on the, on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve application 217-20, site plan, 785-square-foot accessory apartment, apartment Ranseado, 212 Highland Ave. Site plan for 285-square-foot accessory apartment, 212 Highland Ave, as shown on plans entitled alterations and additions, Ranseado McPherson Residence, 212 Highland Ave, Wallingford, Connecticut, dated July 20th, 2020, revised to October 20th, 2020, with the following conditions. Comments in inter-office memorandum from Eric Kruger, senior engineer, Water and Store Division, to Thomas Talbot, planner, dated October 3rd, 2020, and inspection by the zoning enforcement officer prior to issuance of certificate of occupancy.
Good, we have a motion on the application. Do we have a second on the motion?
Sec, I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, voting beginning with Mr. Fitzsimmons.
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Benoit?
Yes.
Mr. Hine?
Yes.
And I vote yes, your application's been approved. Have a good evening. Brings us to our next item on our agenda, which is, again, a new business, a site plan, manufacturing, Old Colony Road Properties LLC, 1262 North, or rather, Old Colony Road. And again, Mr. Cohen, if you would please note all correspondence for the record while the applicant begins preparing for his presentation.
I have a interdepartment referral from the Fire Marshal dated 10/27/2020. I have a letter from Department of Engineering to Planning and Zoning Commission dated October 28th, 2020. I have a letter from Thomas Talbot, planner, to Old Colony Properties LLC dated October 2nd, 2020.
He's gonna be...
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. And again, if the applicant would please introduce himself and begin his presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Ryan McAvoy, and I'm a licensed professional engineer with Mylona McBroom, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant's Old Colony Properties LLC. This application is for a parking lot reconfiguration at 1262 Old Colony Road, which currently is occupied by a company called Controlled Fluidics, which specializes in manufacturing of precision plastic components. I'm gonna try to share my screen, just so that you all can see the plans that we've submitted in support of this application, so I hope it goes well. Hold on one second.
Okay, I'm gonna make you a presenter. So I think if I make you a presenter, you should be able to do that.
Good.
Okay.
Do you see my screen?
Yes, I do.
Okay, this plan represents the existing conditions of the property, and this was submitted along with the application itself. I'm going to switch or toggle to the same plan, but with an aerial background. It's a little easier to see. So if you can see this, this property... Can you see the colored aerial version now?
Yes, it can. The yellow lines around it, is that correct?
Yes, yes, thank you. So this property is highlighted here in yellow around the perimeter. It is a little bit over, just over an acre in size, and it's in the T30 zone. And the building where the Controlled Fluidics operates or is located to the rear of the property, Route 71 or Old Colony Road is to the west, railroad to the east, and existing parking, septic system, utility connections are located between the building and the street. Parking lot right now consists of paved areas and, and broken, broken asphalt areas, and is sort of loosely connected with the neighboring property to the north, which is 1268 Old Colony Road. The applicant seeks to reconfigure the parking area, and along with this reconfiguring of the parking area, there are no proposed modifications to the... And along with this reconfiguring of the parking area, there are no proposed modifications to the existing use or to the existing building. So the site plan. Can you all see this now?
Yes, yes.
This plan, thank you. This plan represents our proposed conditions. Site plan where essentially we're going to take a really sort of unstriped or uncontrolled parking area and, and redistribute the parking spaces around the perimeter of the lot. And notably, we're looking to separate any sort of perceived connection between this site and 1268 Old Colony Road to the north. Actually, I'm going to throw a little bit of color background to this plan. Again, this colored background is not submitted, but it is the same plan, just with a splash of color on the back. So this hopefully shows a little bit better. Again, parking around the perimeter, which will facilitate the ability for delivery vehicles to maneuver throughout the site without interacting with the parking spaces. Based on the size of the building, the zoning regulations require a total of 28 spaces, which we show on the plan. Also notably, along with the bifurcation from any, any, any connection to 1268, we're also working with the DOT right now to, to set this up as an entrance only to the north of the driveway and an exit only to the southern of the driveway. And also, the applicant, based on comments received from staff, has let me know that in past approvals from 2016, he did post a bond that he believes is still in place, but we can work with staff to, to ensure that that's still a valid bond for $2,000. We also had a question regarding the, the parking spaces that are currently in broken asphalt areas. It is the applicant's intent to repave and re-strike the parking lot as shown on this plan. So we don't believe that, that there's a need for curb stops because we will be able to strike the spaces and they'll, they'll remain visible. We also had a question asked by engineering staff about maximum vehicles or sized vehicles that do enter into the site. And for the most part, the site is served by smaller delivery vehicles, UPS, FedEx. Although on occasion, they do have a large tractor trailer that enters into the site. And we did provide graphics showing how a tractor trailer entering from the south would be able to maneuver through the parking lot without interacting with the parking spaces as proposed. And also how a vehicle, tractor trailer coming from the north, southbound on Old Colony Road. But again, be able to enter into site, back into the loading dock area, which is to the east. Without, again, without interacting with any of the parking spaces. So really, in summary, we're looking to segregate the parking from 1268 Old Colony Road. We're looking to convert to a one-way circulation throughout the property. And we're looking to reconfigure the parking spaces so they're more on the perimeter of the parking area rather than sort of uncontrolled parking in the middle of the site. With that, we're also proposed minor, minor site plan changes. Like where handicap parking's proposed, fencing around a dumpster enclosure, which is located to the southeast of the building, which right now just has a dumpster without an enclosure. And we're also providing a couple more landscaping trees along the right-of-way, which are required by zoning. I think there were some that were planted previously, but perhaps didn't survive. So we are looking to reestablish some of the vegetation along, along with 71. So that's, that's our application brief. So if there's any, any questions from the commission, staff, or I guess the public, if they're, they're curious, we'd be happy to answer them.
I just have, before I go to commission members, I know we had some comments from the engineering department concerning the handicap and I'm looking at the revised plans that you submitted. Those, her concerns or the engineering department's concerns have been addressed. Is that correct? Those from the original plans, the handicap spaces were relocated?
Yes, I think the planner and the engineer had the similar concern about, if you can see my cursor, we had handicap spaces designated over in this area. Their concern was the, the proximity to the office building, which is located here. If there's a delivery truck in the way, then, you know, certainly the handicap spaces may not be as appropriately sighted as they could be. So we just swapped it with some standard spaces we had in front of the building, really a minor change.
Okay, thank you. Then I also noted that we had, you received some comments from Mr. Talbot. And I just asked Mr. Talbot if his comments have, their concerns been addressed and he's indicated that they have. So with that, I would open up to commission members who would like to ask the applicant for any, any questions or make any comments on the application. And again, we'll, as always, start with Mr. Fitzsimmons.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no comments on this application. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vanoyt.
No comment.
Mr. Cohen?
No comments, all set. Thanks.
And Mr. Heine?
I just have one or two questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One of the questions is, how often do you expect to have tractor trailers visiting the site?
Based on discussions I've had with the owner and the applicant, it's very infrequent. Occasionally, maybe once a week, they do access the property today. They do make infrequent deliveries today. We just wanted to make sure with how we oriented or organized the parking that maneuverability could be achieved if, for some reason, the parking lot was fully occupied and the tractor trailer did visit this. So it's infrequent, it's rare, but it does happen. So we wanted to make sure that we didn't, that we, that we accounted for with our parking layout.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. So I, I think I understand how a tractor trailer would, would maneuver if they're approaching from the north, heading southbound on Old, Old Colony. Can you explain to me how the tractor trailer would maneuver if they were coming, approaching the property from the south, heading northbound?
So they'd have to, they'd have to extend into the, into the, into the opposite lane in order to make the turn in. This road isn't really wide enough for typical tractor trailers to enter in easily. And what we, what we don't want to do is have a situation where we have a, you know, 50-foot wide driveway entrance to accommodate that infrequent vehicle. Just because it, it would end up potentially causing a more dangerous situation with a, I'd say, extremely wide driveway entrance. So we do expect that often, often the case may be when, when parking spaces are not being fully occupied. So it'd actually be easier to enter into the property when you do have no parking spaces occupied. However, we had to make sure that we, we did account for the potential of all the spaces being used.
So are you, are you saying that if a tractor trailer is approaching from the south, they're going to go in? They would go into the, into the opposite lane to make the turn into the property? Do I understand that to be the case?
That, that, that is, that is the case. And that would be the case probably for most of the tractor trailers on this road that would enter in the properties on the east side. It's, it's not a, it's not a desirable condition, but given the width of the road, we don't have, you know, a 50-foot paved road here. So that, that's more function of Route 71 than it is of the parking lot, I would say.
Yeah, no, fair, fair enough. And then what would the expectation be that they would essentially almost do a U-turn once they, they come into the, into the parking lot and then back up? Is that?
They'd have to, they'd have to make, well, they do make some, you know, multi-point turn to get, to get the, the back of the vehicle into the loading dock. But they, they do manage today and, you know, we expect they'll manage in the future. And in all fairness to tractor, truck drivers, they're, they're, they're probably a little bit, a little bit better maneuvering their vehicles than our models show.
Yeah, no, I would, I would expect that to be the case. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Heine. And at this point in time, I don't have any questions for the applicant. Again, I'm looking at the chat bubble and I don't see that there's any members of the public who would like to speak on the application. So with that, if there's no final comments the applicant would like to make, I'll go to commission members for a motion on the application. Again, sir, would you like to make any final comments?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think we're all set.
Good, thank you. And this time I'd entertain, entertain a motion on the application, but I would like to just note for anyone who is making the application, we do have the revised plans as this gentleman did explain to us and did show at tonight's meeting. And those plans were revised as of November 4, 2020. So with that, if there's no other questions, I'd entertain a motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve application 218-20, site plan for Old Colony Properties for a reconfigured 28-space parking lot at 1262 Old Colony Road, as shown on plans entitled Site Plan Controlled Fluidics. Site parking improvements, 1262 Old Colony Road, Route 71, Winford, Connecticut, dated May 14, 2020 revised to 11/4/2020. Subject to comments in inter-office memorandum from the Fire Marshal to the Planning and Zoning Department dated 10/27/2020. Comments in inter-office memorandum from the Engineering Department to the Planning and Zoning Department dated October 28, 2020. And comments from Thomas Talbot Planner to Old Colony Properties dated October 2, 2020, including a $2,000 site sedimentation and erosion control bond.
Thank you, Mr. Vanoyt. We have a motion on the application. Do we have a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded by Mr. Fitzsimmons, voting beginning with Mr. Fitzsimmons.
Yes.
Mr. Vanoyt?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
And Mr. Heine?
Yes.
And I vote yes on the application. Your application's been approved, sir. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much and good evening.
You're welcome. Brings us down now to item number eight on our application. It's a site plan, 512 square foot accessory apartment for Morales at 7 Stago's Drive. Again, if the applicant would please begin to prepare for a presentation while I ask Mr. Cohen to note all correspondence for the record.
I have a letter from Thomas Talbot Planner to Louis or Luis, sorry, in Sandra Morales dated October 23, 2020. I have a interdepartmental referral notice from the Fire Marshal dated October 27, 2020. I have another interdepartmental referral from Town Engineer dated October 27, 2020. And I have an inter-office memorandum from Eric Kruger, Senior Engineer, Water and Sewer, to Tom Talbot, Acting Town Planner, dated November 3, 2020. And that is it.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. And at this point in time, if the applicant and/or representative would begin their presentation, please.
Might be on mute.
No, I don't believe so. Is it Mike and Kathleen Menard for the Morales? Is that correct? I think your microphone, I think you have your microphone on mute because I haven't muted you. And unfortunately, we cannot hear you. And we still can't hear you. If you would, there is a call-in number. If you may want to try, if you're having problems with your, with your computer getting your microphone to work, you may want to try the call-in number. And we'll make, you don't need to run. We'll wait for you. And we'll just give her a few moments to get set up. And we still can't hear you. Are not able to hear you. Have you tried the call-in number? Yes, I assume everyone can hear me. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
I can hear you.
Yeah. Again, have you tried the call-in number? If you could just give me maybe a piece of paper and put either yes or no, that'd be great.
She, she should be able to access the chat bar.
Oh, hey, that's a good, would you be able to access the chat bar? And again, I, I see you moving your mouth, but unfortunately, again, we're, there's no audio coming through. Tell you what, what we're going to do is, we're going to move on to our next item on the, on the agenda. And perhaps if the applicant again could try to call in again, or if not, well, I just see something here. One more. Yeah, just so, excuse me. Kathleen? Hello? If I want to make sure that you have the, if you have the call-in number. And first of all, apparently the call-in number is, Mr. Vanoyt, if he's correct, the call-in number is 877-309-2073. And he's also given me an access code, which is 874-006-277, and then a hashtag.
Pounds.
Pounds, excuse me.
Pound, thank you. Don't, don't, don't screw it up, pounds.
I got enough of pounds, Jane. I'd rather a JP. I can lose a few. All right, well, this puts a point in time while we're waiting for the applicant to try to connect on the audio. I'll go down to our bond releases and reductions for a site plan demolition, five research parkway LLC and five research parkway. And again, we have an application for the release of the bond. But I guess we do have a memo from the, I can find it here from our engineering, or rather, from Water and Sewer indicated. And now we're getting some feedback. Okay. The Water and Sewer Department, and I guess it indicated, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Talbot, that we've asked for their approval to release the bond, but they're saying the bond was not, they didn't request the bond, so.
Yeah, but they're saying, but they're also saying that they haven't, they have no objection to the
I understand. So who, who requested the bond? They, they've indicated they have no objection, but there was some entity that requested the bond, so it should, it should go back to that entity, correct?
I think as best as I can. Piece together. This was. This bond was originally. Put together in response to, as part of a demolition permit for, for First of Myers. To actually take down the building out there. And I believe that the bond was the bond amount. And the bond was imposed by, I believe, the planning office.
Okay.
I don't think, yeah, so, so. At this point, the planning office. Has no objection to the bond being released, and neither does water and sewer. The reason water and sewer. Obviously, the water and sewer is important here is because it is in the water.
All right, thank you, Mr. Talbot. And again, we're starting to get some feedback. Any commission members have any? Any comments on the, the bond release? And if there's none, I entertain a motion. And I don't see, I said a calling on everybody, just shake your head, yes or no? I take it that all means we're gonna have it, have it released. Okay. At this point in time, I'd entertain a motion to release the, release the bond, as recommended by our, I guess our town planner and the water and store division.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we release the bond as recommended by the town. And the water and store division for site plan demolition, five research Parkway LLC, five research Parkway.
Thank you. We have a motion to release the bond. Do we have a second on the motion?
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Good. All in favor? I.
I.
Opposed. Abstentions. Okay, and I guess.
Can you hear?
I heard.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Is this? Yes, we can. You're good.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Just don't go, go by your computer because we'll get some feedback.
Okay.
So you're fine running where you are.
I'm on my phone now. Okay, I'm sorry. It's, yes, the accessory apartment for Morales at seven Stago's Drive. It's five hundred and twelve square feet. Sorry, I'm out of breath at the rear of the house. I don't know why my computer wasn't picking up the mic. I've done Zoom meetings with my office before, and I've never had a problem with the audio. I apologize.
There's no need to apologize. That's fine. Okay, I take it that would be the extent of your presentation, is that correct?
Pretty much. I think it's pretty straightforward. I don't know if you have any questions.
And actually, we're going to find out on that right now. Are there any commission members that have any questions? Can Mr. Fitzsimmons?
No questions, thank you.
Mr. Heine?
No questions.
Mr. Vanoy?
No questions.
And Mr. Kohan?
No questions.
And I don't have any questions, so I think at this point in time. Unless you have any final comments, I think I will entertain a, a motion on the, on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve application two one nine dash two zero. Plan for Morales for a five hundred and twelve square foot accessory apartment at seven. Stago's Drive as shown on plans entitled limited property boundary survey zoning. Location survey land of Louis Morales and Sandra Morales, seven. Stago's Drive, Wanford, Connecticut dated September twenty first, twenty twenty, subject to. One, comments in inter-office memorandum for Eric Kruger, senior engineer water and store division to Thomas Talbot planner dated. October third, twenty twenty. And two, inspection by a zoning enforcement officer prior issuance of certificate of documents.
Thank you. I have a motion on the application. Do we have a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, voting beginning with Mr. Fitzsimmons.
Yes.
Mr. Vanoy?
Yes.
Mr. Kohan?
Yes.
Mr. Heine?
Yes.
And I vote yes, the application's been approved. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry.
Again, there's no need to apologize. Moving on. And we've all run into these situations before. Next is reports of officers and staff. Number ten, it's the, first is the planning and zoning. Twenty twenty one meeting scheduled. Does anyone have any comments on that? For the benefit of Mr. Fitzsimmons, I noticed we're not meeting on Valentine's Day, so I'm sure he's gonna be very happy about that.
You make my bride happy. Thank you.
Any comments on that? Moving down. Moving down to ZB A decisions for the October nineteenth. Does anyone have any, any comments on that?
Mr. Chairman, I did have, I was just looking over. Those, and I did have just a question. It looks like they approved. One variance. Which is the number one. And then they denied, the one variance they denied. You know, it doesn't look like there's a huge difference between the two in terms, just based upon the numbers, I'm wondering if there was something specific that. Or unusual that would have. Caused them to grant the one and deny the other.
Yeah, I, I think that's certainly a good point. You're talking about. Was it number one and number three, is that correct?
Well, there was number one, twenty dash oh two three, and then they denied twenty dash oh two six.
Oh, yeah, that's right. That's correct. I guess what, what we'll do is we'll ask Mr. Talbot to ask our. Our ZB A liaison, if you would. Amy, Mrs. Torre, to see if she might be able to provide some insight to you on that, Mr. Heine. You would do that?
Yeah.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, I, I just, I get nervous that sometimes, you know, somebody taking a look at these things would, would take a look and say that, that seems a little arbitrary. So.
Good. Okay, I will, and Mr. Talbot, if you would please ask Mrs. Torre if she could, you know, provide some insight, unless you have some insight. Okay, good.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Moving on, ZB A notice. For the November sixteenth meeting of twenty twenty. Again, anyone have any comments on? Any of those items on the agenda? Would like to make any comments or have any questions? Seeing none?
I just. I just wanted to say that. I just wanted to say that number five, it's. Variance for Colony Road storage at six hundred South Colony. They've asked for no action, so that will not be, that's not a public hearing that'll be heard this month, but. My understanding is, at this point. There probably won't be a December meeting, so that won't be on agenda probably till January.
And moving on now to our zoning enforcement log. Anyone have any questions on the zoning enforcement log? Oh, hand both. Any questions, Jeff?
Well, the, the only one I was looking at was, you know, Paradise Hills is still on here. And. I, I looked at, I, I said, I. You know, it's been a long time. I don't know what the. You know, outstanding issues are. Really haven't heard too much about it, but. Maybe for next meeting, we can. Get a little more info on that one.
All right, what I'll do is, again, I'll ask Mr. Talbot if he would ask Mrs. Torre if. She would be able to provide us with a, have an update as to where that. Where that stands. And if you do that, Mr. Talbot? All right, one of the items that's not on the agenda and that I would like to include on the agenda, just as a discussion, I think. Commission members that were at our October meeting, we talked about having just on, on our agenda as a discussion item. The possibility or of considering food trucks on. At the wineries. And again, I would like to just have a discussion on that, so at this point in time. I would kind of like to have a motion to add to our agenda, a discussion item for food trucks at wineries. And again, it's just purely a discussion item at this particular point in time, so, you know, I'd ask for a. You know, a motion if commission members are so disposed, you know, for that, so we can add it to the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we add agenda item food trucks at wineries for discussion on our Monday, November ninth. Planning and zoning meeting.
Have a second?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons. All in favor?
Aye.
And I believe we're all in favor. And again, this is an item that came up. I think I mentioned at our. In our last meeting, there was a small group that was put together and, and spearheaded initially by Counselor. Shortel of looking at, you know, certain items that may help some of our, our businesses, not only during the, you know, during the pandemic, but also just going forward. And one of the, one of the, the items that was mentioned was, you know, food trucks at. Allowing food trucks at, at wineries at, you know, at some level perhaps. You know, right now, under the governor's executive orders, that, it's my understanding that those are allowed. And would essentially somewhat supers, I guess not somewhat, but I get superseded zoning. And I, I know certainly, you know, members of the community and other people have, you know, mentioned and made some observations that. With the food trucks at the wineries, there doesn't seem to be at, at this point in time. Any. Any real, if you would, concern or. Well, I guess I would say just any real areas of concern there. And certainly, I think we. By going by some of the wineries, few that we have in town, you know, certainly during the pandemic, I think that. Most of them are, are doing probably fairly good business on, on the weekends especially, so there's certainly more traffic at the wineries. And, you know, given that there's food trucks there, I believe, at least on a temporary basis. And I haven't heard, I'm not sure if any commission members have heard, that that's been a real issue from the standpoint of, of traffic or other types of issues there. And so with that, I thought it might be appropriate to just discuss with the commission if we wanted to look at. Making a change in our regulations, regulations rather, to allow food trucks at some level perhaps. At the, at the winery. So, again, I would just open that up for discussion. Anyone who would like to make a comment, just. Raise your hand first and I'll call on you as I see the hands fly up. Don't disappoint me, Mr. Fitzsimmons. Let me see your hand. I saw Mr. Kohan, it has raised his hand, I believe.
Yeah. Um, thanks, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I, I think it's a good idea. Um, you know, I. I think a lot of people bring their own food, but I think, you know, the food trucks would really be a nice enhancement, especially with the. You know, variety of trucks that are, are around now. But the, the one question I have is. You know, we're specifically singling out wineries when we got a couple of breweries in town.
And ciderries too.
Exactly. And I, I, you know, if we're gonna do wineries. You know, I think we have to do the other establishments as well. And, you know, quite honestly, I. I know there's been some controversy on Center Street with. You know. Having a truck there and. You know, competing against some of the, you know, restaurants right in the center of town. So, you know. I am in favor of it, but I think we'd have to, you know, make a pretty judicial decision not to, you know, exclude anybody and. You know, appease some of the other restaurant owners in town if we decided to do it for the breweries.
Wait, I, I think actually, I'm sorry, Mr. Kohan, go ahead.
No, that, that's it.
I think, I, I appreciate your comments because I was remiss because in, you know, in prior conversations I, I've had with, with, with people in. With Wallingford Center, Inc. and such, they did mention that also we should consider the, the breweries and the, and the ciderries, whatever. But I think what we're looking for here is, if we do allow it, it would be food trucks on the, the properties of those, of those businesses. It would not be on town property. So, much like some of the breweries or ciderries, whatever, as well as the, the wineries. It would be on their property, not on, you know, not on, on town property. I think that's, at least that would be what I think we'd be, we'd be looking at here. Mr. Fitzsimmons, I saw you raise your hand.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I certainly agree with Jeff saying, I think, but you, you kind of hit it because it has to do with where the truck could be located. You know, the wineries have the room. I, I don't know if someone, you know, if a couple of the breweries, I don't know if any even have the room to be able to support it on their site. We, right now, we regulate it by zone, not use. So I would be in favor of this, Mr. Chairman. I just think what we need to do is update the reg because right now we limit it to no more than. Twenty days a year.
That's weird.
That's, so, but it's, if we remember from the end of the October meeting, it's all over the regs because we touch it by zone. So it talks about mobile food vendors. So revising the, the limit in number of days, I think would address a lot of it. Then maybe, Jeff, they might have, you know, some of them might have an opportunity, but I, I think it does have, I think the regulation is clear, they can't, you can't park it on town property. That's, I think, the issue.
Yeah, exactly.
But I'd be in favor of. Updating the reg to, and certainly in light of what's going on.
Okay. As far as updating it though, you know, Mr. Fitzsimmons, again. Your thoughts or other commission members' thoughts as far as, you know, the number of days, if it would be just a Thursday, Friday, Saturday, or, or Sunday, or there. Are we talking of, you know, seven days a week, or? Does anyone have any comments on that? Or any thought on that? Again, we're looking, well, we're looking to do it right now, just so I'm clear. We're not looking to, you know, define something in, in total, but just looking for some ideas. So then, Mr. Talbot, perhaps in consultation with our corporate counsel could. With some of these ideas, put something, at least a draft together that we could look at perhaps at our next meeting, not for a public hearing, but just for a discussion item. Again. Uh, yeah, Mr. Talbot.
One quick thing about this, and I, I do not have the background in this that you all do, but. There's a difference between the wineries and any other place, any other use where they might want to have food trucks. The, the difference is that winery can't serve food, period. These other places, from what I understand, a brewery or someplace like that, they could if they wanted to, but it's, it's different for the wineries. They can't. What you're trying to do is you're trying to lift that restriction about the serving of food, period. So maybe the first thing you want to do is focus on the wineries and then bring it out to a larger consideration, that, just a suggestion.
I think, Mr. Talbot, I think, again, I, I talked to our corporate counsel and she indicated that as far as allowing or having food trucks at wineries. That there's no state. Regulation and there's no state constraint on that.
I, I didn't say there was, but it's a, it's a local practice. And I was told that by the town because.
No, I understand it's a local practice. I, I understand that, but the state doesn't, the idea that you can't serve, I think indicated, state says you can't serve food or something.
I said that, I, I said that they're not allowed to serve food. I didn't say it's by virtue of the state, it's by virtue of local.
Oh, yeah, that's. Oh, no, that's.
But these other places can't serve food if they want to. They just don't want to when they want to have a food truck. There, there's a difference. And I think that you might want to deal with the wineries first, where they can't serve. That's all, that's all I'm saying.
Okay, I, I appreciate that, but I, I guess I think that, at least in my mind, I'd like this to be more all encompassing. So, again, other, don't laugh at me, Mr. Fitzsimmons.
No, you, I, I. I agree, Mr. Chairman.
All right, at this point in time, are there any other commission members that would like to? All right. At this point in time, are there any other commission members that would like to make some comments? Or any of their thoughts? So I think yes, Mr. Hein?
Yeah, I don't have much to say other than, you know, I I think what what we should do is move forward with a with a draft, not get too far into substance before we we start, you know, reviewing it. I think, you know, come up with a draft, then we then we have some discussion, maybe a workshop or something, and then public hearing. So, you know, I I just don't think we should get too far into the substance of it until we you know, we have it on as an agenda item. But I do agree, you know, let's come up with a draft. I I think your question about, you know, do we want to do, do we want a draft that has that is limited in days is a is a good one. I mean, you know, that is probably something that we should come to a conclusion on before the draft is done. You know, is it is it Friday, Saturday, Sunday? Is it Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday? Is it every day? We should at least be able to to come to a conclusion on that. So we get a proper draft.
Anyone have thoughts on that? I guess from my, you know, from my perspective, I think the Thursday through Sunday would would probably be more more appropriate. But again, that's just my thoughts. We have some, you know, if we have some general consensus on that, what I'll, what I will plan on doing is certainly not this week and probably not next week, but the following week, I'll look to arrange a, you know, a meeting between Mr. Talbot and attorney, smaller corporate counsel to to discuss this, to see if, in fact, we can put together some, you know, some outline for a potential, you know, potential amendment to be first discussed by the commission. And then if there's interest in going forward, then it, you know, a future meeting, and certainly I don't envision that being any sooner than our January meeting, you know, than to bring it forward to a public hearing. So with that, unless there are any final comments that commission members would like to make this evening, and I see that there are are none, at this point in time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adjourn our Monday, November 9th, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
We have a second on that motion?
I will second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Very much, gentlemen. We we are adjourned. Have a good evening. Stay safe.
Nice job.
Good night. Stay safe. Thank you.